It's thirty Friday night and then the interview starts at seven.
Ellery, the lights are on. Good evening. Good evening, I'd like to call the council meeting to order for February the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Tonight we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance led especially tonight by the Girl Scouts, and I would like to call Courtney Delasante to come up to the microphone, please. And Courtney, if you would just start us off, we're all gonna stand and then you can go ahead and start and then we'll follow you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible and never to injustice for all.
Thank you very much, very well done. Council roll call, please.
Mayor Deaton.
Here.
Mayor Potem Sloan.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Masalavet.
Here.
Councilmember Merfaire Papa.
Here.
So now we're going to the approval of agenda and waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances by motion of the city council. This is the time to notify the public of any changes to the agenda and/or to rearrange the order of the agenda. Do we have anyone that would like to pull an item?
I'd like to pull item E.
Councilman Miller?
E.
E is okay. Are there any others to be pulled?
Mayor, if I could just make a comment, some staff has no changes, just for the public's benefit, on consent calendar item D, which is the I-405 improvements project update, since the letter was not ready and available in the council packet that was emailed out today and is available for the public as well, it's here on the dais, too.
I'd like to pull that item.
Okay, thank you. So we have pulled D and we have pulled E. All right, do I have a motion to accept the agenda as is without items D and E?
So move.
Second.
Please vote. That's five zero, accepting the agenda without D and E. Now we will go on on the agenda to presentations and recognitions, and tonight we are going to begin with the Orange County Human Relations Annual Report, and tonight to speak to us about the Orange County Human Relations is Christian Lopez. Christian, if you'll come forward, please to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Christian Lopez and I'm part of the Board of Directors of Orange County Human Relations. I'm here tonight to present on last, over the last year, and present you with copies of our annual report. We believe that all people have a right to live freely from discrimination and violence, so we provide programs to create safe, respectful communities. This year, as our community became more diverse and our world more, our world smaller, we saw an increase in profane, abusive, and hate speech during some city council meetings, making your job more difficult, protecting free speech rights with maintaining civility. OC Human Relations partners with cities to manage challenging issues with meaningful participation of all residents in the decision-making process, maintaining civility and hearing as a community in the wake of a difficult conflict. Many of our programs are provided countywide, but we would like to share, I would like to share the following data about some of our additional services exclusively for Seal Beach. We mediated forty-four cases as well as family mediations in the community or courts where one of our parties was a resident of Seal Beach. In collaboration with Seal Beach Police on hate crimes and individuals or community groups on hate incidents, we documented one hate crime in Seal Beach in two thousand fifteen. We sought to build a sense of community with Seal Beach residents and staff through hate crime, take them support. In conclusion, over the past twenty-two years, OC Human Relations partnered with OC cities to proactively build understanding and positive relations among diverse residents. Being police and diverse residents, we try to build safe and respectful neighborhoods, address tragic conflicts, overcome the divisiveness that erodes our sense of community, and sustain the infrastructure to assist in crisis situations when they occur. Just as important as the infrastructure of strong drains, curbs, and gutters are, I'd say the protection of Seal Beach residents, is the human relations infrastructure of effective integrated relation programs, trained professional staff, and positive relationships with diverse elements of our communities that can be called on at OC Human Relations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I really appreciate your statement about guarding the First Amendment rights while maintaining civility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the recognition of outgoing appointees to the council boards, commissions, and committees, and tonight I have presentations to be made to Dr. Robert Goldberg, Carla Watson, Craig Powell, and Mario Voci. I see two of you here, Dr. Goldberg and Mr. Powell, and so if you'll come forward, please. Mr. Powell, thank you so much for your service, and if you would like to say a few words, the mic is yours. And Dr. Goldberg, thank you very much for your service, and if you'd like to say a few words, the mic is there.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, I'd like to say it was a real honor to be on the Planning Commission for three years. It was a challenge to be on that, on the dais, on that side of the mic versus this side of the mic where I spend most of my time, and it was really quite a learning experience, and it was, it was an honor to serve. Thank you.
Likewise, likewise, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as a commissioner on the Recreation and Parks Commission for District Five. It was enjoyable, enlightening, and I found it satisfactory and rewarding as well, and I agree with term limits, I think those are good, and I wish we could do that at the national level as effectively. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, and then tonight, our last recognition is going to go to the Seal Beach Girl Scout Troop of Eight Twenty-Eight, and the Girl Scouts have asked for something special for the Girl Scout House, and that is to memorialize the Girl Scout House as a significant building. So I am going to come down and give this to their leader, Mrs. Delasante, and if you would like to come to the mic and say a few words about it, that'd be great.
Good evening, Honoreables Councilmembers and everyone here tonight. It is an honor to be present and to be given the opportunity to speak this evening as a Girl Scout troop leader. The Girl Scout House has served as a Girl Scout house since nineteen forty-four. Thanks to Mildred Sprouse, who long ago started the first troop here in Seal Beach, her trip was number one. She was also the first mail carrier here in Seal Beach. Thanks to her, we have the beautiful building on Seventh and Electric that we house almost two hundred Girl Scouts here in Seal Beach. It has served us well. I am proud to say that I have led this trip since my daughter was in kindergarten, and I would really like for you to consider it to become a significant building, meaning that it's on the map and that it's recognized by Seal Beach community and visitors. We will begin with my daughter Courtney, just to say a few words if you don't mind.
I have been a Girl Scout since I was in kindergarten. The Girl Scout House has been important to me because I have learned how to help people and volunteer my time in the community. We have also learned how to prepare food for the Ronald McDonald kids. I learned to prepare groceries for the local food bank assisting families in need. I learned how to tend a garden at the Girl Scout House and help other people who are sick. The Girl Scout House is where I learned to work together and raise funds for a good cause. The Girl Scout House means so much to me because my mom became a Girl Scout, too, when she was a Girl Scout. The Girl Scout House is a place where I can be myself. Activities at the Girl Scout House were a lot of fun. It's a place for us to play and work, and work as a team. The Girl Scout House is a place for me to make new friends. I have worked with my Girl Scout sisters to prepare gifts for children in need like Operation Christmas Child for children in Africa. I like the Girl Scout House because any girls from different schools can go there. The Girl Scout House is a safe place where we work together, learn together, and bond with our Girl Scout sisters through numerous activities. It's not just our house, it's our home.
As you can see and hear through Eight Twenty-Eight, the Seal Beach Girl Scout House has been instrumental in rearing our girls in the Seal Beach community. We realize that this house is an unusual asset to the city of Seal Beach and its community of families, and naming it a significant building is giving the house its proper recognition to all visitors and to those who live in the Seal Beach community. It is with great honor that I am sitting here today with you. Thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
And we have your proclamation of the significant building right there.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, with that ends our presentations and recognitions, we would like to move into oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding any items within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city council. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's direction, be referred to the city manager and placed on a future addenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution, so if you'd like to speak to us, please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Carrie Wog and I'm Executive Director of LEAF, the Los Alamos Education Foundation. I'm also a Seal Beach resident, I live in College Park East, and I am here this evening along with Board President Randy Hill, LEAF Board President, and our President of the School Board Diana Hill, as well as Dr. Sherry Crop, our Superintendent, to thank and congratulate Chief Joe Stolenovich for his participation in our King and Queen of Hearts campaign, which culminated in our gala on Friday evening. I'd like to thank Mayor Deaton for being in attendance, and it was a really amazing event that ended a ten-week campaign where we had eight amazing community members who competed against each other to raise as much money as possible for our foundation and for our school district. Chief Joe did a fantastic job, starting with the Polar Plunge on January first, which brought lots of folks into our ocean to start the new year off right, as well as Change Drives with McGaw and Leveon Elementary Schools, and I'm just individually and speaking on behalf of LEAF extremely grateful for the time and effort that he put into the campaign, and I wanted to thank the city for allowing him to work with us on this. So defer to others to speak.
Good evening, I'm Diana Hill and I am the President of our school board. I'm very honored to be here this evening. Couple things, one, I want to thank you also very graciously for the use of your chambers while our district office is being renovated, and we really appreciate having that opportunity to have our board members, our board meetings here, so I feel very at home at the moment. I also want to thank Chief Joe and also the community at all at large for really getting around and behind our Queen and King of Hearts campaign, and not only was it an opportunity for LEAF to raise funds, it's also an opportunity for us to bring more awareness to what our education foundation does and all the benefits that it gives our students, and so we're very appreciative of all of the support that the Seal Beach gives us on a regular basis. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, City Council and staff, I also want to thank Chief Stolenovich. As chief, he obviously has exceptional leadership and a competitive nature. We were able to witness that through this campaign, and we're very grateful to him for sharing those traits with our community and helping raise funds for the Los Alamos Education Foundation. I also would like to thank you for being there, Mayor Deaton, and I hope maybe one of you can help us next year. Thank you very much for all you do for your communities.
Honorable Mayor and esteemed members of the council and staff, and they said thank you, so I'll just say thank you as a repeat, and also as our Board President, Mrs. Hill, said, we have so appreciated being able to have our city council, our city, our Board of Education meetings here, and tomorrow night at our board meeting at six-thirty, we are going to say thank you to Jill and her staff. Thank you, you have been amazing to work with, we're really grateful, and it just goes to show so much about it, doesn't matter if we're working in our city district working group meetings, or with the city manager, or with the chief, or any of the other staff members, it's really just been a tremendous experience for us. And then showing up tonight, I love that I got to see some Girl Scouts speak and be honored, and then you'll see that there's a lot of government students back there, too, so I think it must be an assignment, so I'm liking that, but thank you very much for allowing us to speak tonight.
Thank you all, it was a real lovely evening. Chief Joe mentioned that I failed to say that the campaign raised a hundred and ten thousand dollars in ten weeks. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, then I'm gonna close oral communications and we will move on.
Not now, Mayor?
Yes.
There was one person who wanted to speak.
Oh, now Joyce, you know you need to get down here if you're gonna talk.
I'm down at the Scout House, too, I have a granddaughter in the, in the troop over there. Joyce Parquet, Old Town Seal Beach. So I'm not here to give good news, I'm here to give bad news on the previous measure, dear neighbor. As everybody knows, Proposition thirteen was saved by Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association. So a lot of people in town do have Proposition thirteen, and Howard Jarvis Taxpayers Association I belong to as well, and they've enlightened me a lot about your campaign, dear neighbor. And they've also, in my garage, I have a lot of their documents, and it's not right to use taxpayers' money for lecturing. It's not right for the city manager to use taxpayers' money for Measure E and D, dear neighbor, it's not right. And the California, California League of Cities was taken to court for using taxpayers' money to electioneering. The others, I should stay, though, to get a civics lesson, since I don't have my school anymore. So it's not right to use taxpayers' money, and the California League of Cities was taken to court regarding using taxpayers' money on Proposition Two Eighteen. So I'm excited, I better send, dear neighbor, to the Howard Jarvis Tax Association. So what I got back from them was not good and some bad news for us, but also I didn't have my book when you sent out your impartial analysis and argument in favor, I didn't have that book, because they said you went over the edge. The city manager should not have put in there that we were gonna save the whole city by Measure D, if you vote for it. There's no way you can save the whole city. The things that you put in there, they told me were improper, but they also told me that I had a right within a ten-day public jury to object to this, dear neighbor, electioneering. And then they also told me I had a right five days after the measure was passed to also have a, question you, and we were never given that right. We were never given that right, because here I have the audience for and nothing against. We were never given the right, we were never told that there is a section code, election code nine-two-nine-five, that we could have objected to the way she handled taxpayers' money. It's taxpayers' money, it's a lecturing, lecturing, campaigning that you should have used your own money, you should have used your money. Why didn't you use your own money? It's like I said, the trust is gone, it's gone, and I want the money put back into the general fund, because it's gonna get worse.
Pardon me?
Pardon me? So anyway, here, I didn't come with good news and I didn't come with bad news, but we're gonna move forward, I will continue to move forward.
One minute.
One minute. I'll continue to move forward with Howard Jarvis, because I have more questions about how you did this. As far as the two, what is it, a million dollars that this consultant's supposed to give back to the city on her oil, at it, well, the two-hundred thousand dollars a year, a hundred thousand of that you give back to an oil company, and I think there was another oil company, which I'm still trying to find in my garage, that was giving money to stay here in town. So what about, how do we pay for the, what I call the bed and breakfast down at the police station? Do we pay for that now? No. What about the tennis court? No. What about the, what I call the Seal Beach Hot Club? No. So how can you say that the utility taxes are gonna pay for everything in town? It's wrong. They told me it was wrong. So I will continue on my journey, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, is it okay to close public comments then? Okay, gonna close them, and we will move on now to city attorney report.
I have nothing to report tonight. My voice is very weak tonight, I have nothing to report tonight, thank you.
All right, city manager report.
This Mayor, I have a couple items tonight, first of all, just want to remind the council and the community, we have a couple of pretty significant events this weekend. On Saturday, February twenty-eighth is the fortieth Annual Americano Awards at the Disneyland Hotel Grand Ballroom where Dee Carey will be recognized as our Citizen of the Year, and then followed by Sunday, March first, at four PM at the Los Alamos High School Performing Arts Center is the annual Miss Seal Beach Pageant, so looking forward to both of those events. And then finally, I'd like to ask Patrick Diego's just to give an update on Centennial and shameless plug for some opportunities for community participation. Patrick?
Thank you, Madam City Manager. I just wanted to briefly mention for the public's benefit that the Centennial Committee has launched its Centennial website. You can find that at sealbeachonehundred.com, that's sealbeachonehundred.com, where you'll find the scheduled events and projects for the, for our centennial year. You'll also find a place to, for volunteer opportunities. We have a lot in store for this year. First event will be on May fourth, it's a golf tournament, so look, many things to come, look at our schedule events and participate in any way that you can. That's about it, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Vera Papa.
Yeah, I just wanted, on behalf of the crossing guard at McGaw, I just wanted to give a shout-out to Sean, his staff, for the pavement markers they put up recently, it really makes a big difference, according to Ms. Sylvia and her coworkers over there. She's gotten a lot of good feedback on that, and it's really working out pretty well, I think, especially during the day and nighttime. They've also done some repainting of the curbs, which has also helped out a lot. Thank you, Sean.
Mayor Potem.
Recently, in San Juan Capistrano, a woman and her two sons died in a condo fire with no working smoke alarms. Less than a day later, a similar one broke out in Santa Ana. At the second fire, working- At the second fire, working smoke alarms alerted residents to the blaze at about 1:00 AM. Eight residents escaped unharmed. So please, make sure that you have working smoke alarms in your house. And that's coming from a firefighter with 35 years' experience.
Councilwoman Martha Rabbit?
I have nothing.
And Councilman Miller?
Yeah, I have a couple things. I want to thank the outgoing appointees for their service to the city. And also in particular, although he's not here tonight, Mario Boce, who came to District 4 when the tree advisory committee was two or three people, and he'd come and spent many hours with me, a couple hours, a few hours, I'll say, with me, helping things regarding the trees in College Park East and also the eucalyptus grove. So I appreciated his efforts at a time before I was able to add somebody from District 4. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. And all I would like to do is to say that the L.A.'s fundraiser for our schools was a wonderful evening, and I appreciated the opportunity to be able to go. So-
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I back up and make an announcement?
Yes.
On Monday evening in Leisure World, Councilmember Sloan and I are having a town hall meeting for the people who live in Leisure World. We are asking them for their input on how the city and Leisure World can work better together. Doesn't work bad together, but make it a little better, and what's of interest to the people in Leisure World. So those of you who are watching this evening, I don't think any of you are in the audience, but please come to the meeting and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Thanks.
Okay, perfect. All right, now we're going to move along and vote on the consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
So move.
Second.
Okay, please vote. That's 5-0, to approve the consent calendar as presented. The first item that we have pulled is the I-405 Improvement Project Update, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter. Item D was pulled by Councilman Vera Papa. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Sean Crumbie, our Public Works Director, will present this item tonight. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item D on the agenda is being brought forward as a letter for signature of the mayor by the Corridor Cities Group. I'll just provide a brief background on the situation related to the 405 Improvements Project and talk about the letter. The consent status of the project on February 9th of this year, the OCTA Board of Directors was presented with a design-build cooperative agreement. That's an agreement between OCTA and Caltrans for moving forward with the 405 Improvements Project. That project, or that agreement, was not approved by the board that day. And in fact, there had been significant comments during the board meeting from several of the board members indicating that they believe that alternate 3 is indeed going to happen. And so they, in turn, directed OCTA staff to renegotiate the cooperative agreement with Caltrans with a few goals in mind, and they're highlighted in the staff report, but essentially it was having OCTA become the leading construction and become manager of the toll lanes in the future.
Sloan, I hate to interrupt you, could you explain what alternate 3 is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Alternate 3 is the option, it's the preferred option that Caltrans has selected for the project, and it includes adding two lanes to the freeway, one general purpose lane, and one lane to the carpool lanes, and then converting those two carpool lanes into toll lanes. So it will have toll lanes on the freeway. An ad hoc committee has been set up over at OCTA to do those negotiations comprised of board members from the OCTA Board. After that direction was provided to the staff, the Corridor Cities met two days later on February 11th, and at a conference call developed a letter from the Corridor Cities to OCTA and Caltrans to, again, reaffirm the Corridor Cities' position on the 405 Improvements Project. Some key points to that position are that the Corridor Cities are against alternate 3 or any alternate, that includes toll lanes, or higher occupancy toll lanes on the freeway. And then reaffirming the position that there is a alternate that the Corridor Cities would prefer, which includes adding the same two lanes, but having no toll lanes on the freeway, but having two carpool lanes on the freeway. So the letter you have in front of you today basically states that opinion. So without a available answer, any questions that you have?
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to just state, in regards to this item tonight, on the agenda, I need to say for the record that I am an employee of the state of California, and I am obligated to make this statement. Having done so, I'd like to ask the clerk to put these in the minutes of today's meeting. In addition, I'd like to discuss some of these items that you are putting in the letter. Now, it's my understanding that you've written, in the past, the Corridor Cities have written letters to OCTA in the past. Has there been any feedback on those letters in response to that?
There's been a host of correspondence back and forth, both between the City of Seal Beach and OCTA, Underground Transportation Authority, and Caltrans, and also between the Corridor Cities and those agencies. A host of correspondence related to city and Corridor Cities' position on the project and desires for the project.
But has OCTA ever came back and agreed with anything, or is it just kind of dialogue in general? Because the point I'm trying to make is, I think we're very fortunate to have myself on the council for this item, and Councilman Miller being on the board is very intuitive for us to have this opportunity to work with OCTA if need be on this. And I think it's important that we state the fact that we are totally against the toll road, the toll lane, but the letter doesn't leave anything open for discussion, it just kind of says, "We don't agree, thank you very much." And I just wasn't sure what the dialogue has been in the past, because I don't want to come in late on this issue, but I think it's important dialogue to have.
I think the city has expressed a host of concerns related to the project and made significant progress on a variety of issues, such as the almond alley sound wall and different things going on. In regards to the high occupancy toll lane issue, that is one issue that the Corridor Cities and OCTA and Caltrans have not been able to come to an agreement on. So the preferred alternative selected by Caltrans is alternate 3 at this point, and the Corridor Cities have expressed their desire not to have toll lanes on the freeway.
And the letter asks for all mayors of the Corridor Cities to sign this? Do we know if they've signed it, or they've agreed to sign it, or how is that?
So this issue, the cooperative agreement, the appointments of that agreement, an update is expected to be brought forward to the Orange County Transportation Authority Board on March 9th. And as such, the time has been short, that's why this issue came forward, and there was an advance time to have the letter drafted. We did receive that letter this morning, and it is being distributed to the Corridor Cities now, so I don't have an update as to when the signatures will happen, but my anticipation is that it'll probably be late this week.
Gary, would you have any input on that?
I have some comments.
I'll wait to your-
Oh, go ahead. I just wanted to mention a couple of things that you left out, Sean, with regard to the current effort with OCTA as, and I think those of us that really were opposed, are opposed to toll lanes. If we could have continuous access, and if we could have the HOV 2+ free, I think the opposition would go away. 2+ free would mean there were no difference than today, that two-person carpool could be in the carpool lane or the toll lane for free. Continuous access, right now, we only have, you have it starting at the county line, and then the next spot is Golden West, and the next spot is Magnolia, and then it's the 73. So it's very limited on getting in and out. It's more of a tunnel for those people going from Long Beach South, or the people from mid and south coming, coming north, which has been one of my frustrations, that the board members that are from those areas really kind of ignore the fact that their constituents are going to be paying those tolls, which are as high as $18 round trip a day coming out of Orange County, $18.54 to be exact. One of the problems with toll lanes, if they put managed lanes in, managed lanes only work if you have congestion. And so they're going to manage that, so if there are congestion, there's going to be congestion in the general purpose lanes. That's the purpose, so people will pay to get into the toll lanes. The problem for us is that, we're not like the 91 toll road, where there's only one way through that canyon. We will have people like in Huntington Beach, Westminster, Garden Grove, and people in our city going the other direction, that will use streets like Pacific Coast Highway, Westminster Boulevard, Lamson, Catella. Our surface streets are going to come overloaded because the freeway is going to be overloaded. And if you live in West Garden Grove, instead of getting on the freeway and being in that congestion, you're going to come down Lamson, you're going to come down Catella. And it's just not in the best interest of our people. In my district, I had meetings early on, and I would say over 90%, probably 97, 98% of the people, if not 100%, were against toll lanes. And that's been my guiding factor. And so far, every mayor has signed these letters that we've developed, and I think that there's also legislative effort still going on regarding this from our consultant, Townsend and Associates. And, you know, it's frustrating for me because I hear people, the chair of the board, actually, says, "Well, I don't want to take that extra money and put in here so we have toll lane, I mean, so we have HOV lanes." And so the frustration is, it's his constituents that are going to have to pay that toll. And it's really more for mid and south counties' benefit than our benefit. We're just going to suffer the construction and the congestion. So I think it's important that we continue this effort until there's no, until we can't go no further. I was disappointed I wasn't able to get on the ad hoc committee. There was a Brown Act violation if I was on there, because I'm on the highway committee, and we already have three members that are on this ad hoc committee. Our supervisor, Michelle Steele, is on that committee, and they're active right now. And I look forward to seeing if they can come back with continuous access and HOV 2+ free. I see we have no issues. So I wait to hear that. I'm not optimistic, I'm pessimistic, but I'm hopeful.
Well, I think it's a good point. Is there any room to add that statement on the letter? I mean, if the opposition goes away, 2+?
Well, I don't know if that's beyond myself. That's my position.
Right.
I feel that if we can have 2+ free, and we can have continuous access or more access. I've talked to Caltrans Director 12, Ryan Chamberlain, and he says we're going to have more access. And I think within the week, is it, Sean, that we're going to have a meeting with Caltrans? And I hope to hear more about that. So it's an active item, and I'm-
That point has been made to Caltrans, and they are aware of that position in regards to the 2+ and the continuous access.
Yeah, I think it'd be good to get something like that language in the letter, if we could, if the Corridor Cities agree to that, if that's-
Well, I think the problem is, that's just my position, and that's my position before voting, and I don't know if I changed my position, but it just seems like if you can have what you have today, and have 2+ free, and have more access, where's the issue? So that's my position. As one board member, without a final, without all the input.
Do we have any other questions or comments on this? I guess as the signer of the letter, I would really like to see that. And since we are a member of the Corridor Cities, I don't know why we can't tell them we would like to have that added, and that that will make it easier. I think it's wonderful that Gary's come up with an alternative that would make it, it sounds to me like it's a really good position, Gary, to have, because we don't want the toll lanes, yet we do recognize the fact that they've got to be able to move traffic, and we want them to be able to get off, and we want to be able to get off at our own off ramps. So it seems to me that it's pretty much been, and ignore the pun, their way or the highway, but I think it's time that we start saying, there is a place, there's a ground where we can meet, and I think Councilman Miller has given us an excellent place where we can meet it, and I would like to see that put into the letter.
Well, the good news is that I don't believe any of the other cities have signed, so I think we can make revision to add that in and forward it to the group and see how the group feels about it.
Okay, that would be great. So how do you want me to dispose of this, then?
Well, it kind of depends on the process of the letter, I'm not-
I'm sorry, Steve.
I'm sorry.
I have a few questions.
Just bear with me, please.
All right, how about this? I'm going to direct staff, please, to investigate whether or not that can be added to the letter, and then if it can be added, then I'll just go ahead and sign it when it's available.
I guess the question is, what happens if the group does not agree to the additional language? Is the council full support of when you sign the letter as presented?
I would propose that, that we make this proposal, vote it for unsuccessful, we still sign the letter.
Okay, so do you want to make that as a motion?
Please.
Sure.
Okay. I'm not sure exactly what your words are, but-
Yeah, I really would, I will feel more comfortable if we could start that negotiation, and if the Corridor Cities isn't willing to do it this time around, I'll go ahead and vote with you to sign it as is. But if they come back around and haven't moved at all in any way, then I would be hesitant to continue down that road.
No, it's-
You know, I mean, we've got to find some meeting of the minds here, or else we're just going to get it crammed down our throats.
Well, I think we, I think we, as a board, discussed that at the last meeting, that we wanted continuous access, and we wanted more access, and we wanted the HOV 2+ free.
Good.
As board members, we expressed that. I don't know what the ad hoc committee is going to come back with. They're going to come back to get the schedule, and I think the highway committee, we're going to have it like on the 2nd of March, they're going to present it to us, and I'm on the highway committee. Then on the 9th, they're going to present it to the board, but then as done, I think it's going to be toward the, probably the last board meeting of March before they come back with the final recommendation, I think.
And when do they want this letter signed by?
Anytime now.
Well, so the negotiation with the ad hoc committee is happening right now, and so they want this letter to be sent during those negotiations, so right now.
Okay.
And I think your point's well taken. We will need to come up with the words to satisfy, we'd like to see those two things come out of the ad hoc committee, so.
All right. So, yeah, I think that should be in there. So could you see what you can do with it? And Gary, would it be all right if I work with staff on it and maybe involve you in the discussion with it, and then we come up with something that we can work with?
Okay. As long as I don't have Sandra involved in it. Well, you're on the Corridor City Group.
Well, I am, but I haven't been to a meeting yet.
You'll come. Well, yeah, I think that's fine. Actually, I think that when we feed this back to our consultants, they'll probably give us the best words, probably coming back from them, more than likely, and something the other group will accept.
So can I just say what I'm hearing this-
The motion from Mr. Miller was-
Do we need a motion on this?
Well, if you're going to authorize the mayor to sign the letter, I think a motion would be appropriate.
Okay, okay.
The motion is that we will modify this letter and propose it to the other Corridor City Group related to, I'm going to put the words exactly, but related to continuous access or more access, whichever one we come up with ultimately, and 2+ being free in the toll lane. And if we're unsuccessful, we'll still sign this letter as it exists.
Right. But make our-
But we will put that effort out.
Okay, very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
My button fell off. All right. Oh, I believe we need to have a roll call vote on this.
Yeah, go ahead.
Do you vote on this?
Madam Mayor?
Oh, there it is.
It did actually appear to the vote, so we have-
Okay, so we have four in approval, and we have one abstention. Okay? Thank you.
Just one.
All right, and now we are going to go on to the professional services agreement. Item E pulled by Councilman Miller. Do we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. And again, Sean Crumbie will present this item to you tonight. Sean?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. Item E on the agenda is a recommendation to award a professional services agreement to the firm of NBS to perform a water and sewer rate study for the city of Seal Beach. Tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit about the water and sewer study, and just briefly a little bit about the process. If you have any questions in the audience, we have Kim Bowler, on wave Kim. Kim is with the firm of NBS, so she's available to answer any detailed questions you have about the process, or available to talk about their firm and some of their firm experience if you have questions. So just a little bit about our water system. The city has water pipelines throughout the city that provide clean domestic water to all of our residents. We have approximately 75 miles of water pipeline, four active wells, two booster stations, those are stations that pressurize the system so that you have pressure when you turn the faucet on your water. We have one imported water connection that is, we're not able to pump all of our water from wells, so we do import some water, and that's that connection. We do have emergency connections with other retail agencies, but this is a wholesaler connection of where we purchase water from. We have two reservoirs, fire hydrants- We have two reservoirs, fire hydrants and valves throughout the cities and approximately fifty-seven hundred service connections. Our sewer system, we have sewer pipes throughout the city and the city provides sewer collection services. We don't do treatment, that's the Orange County Sanitation District, but we do collection and pass on that sewage to the sand district, the sanitation district. We have gravity sewer lines and pressurized force mains in the city. We have five sewer pump stations where we have low spots in the city and we pump the sewage out of the city. We have manholes and we have approximately five thousand connections throughout the city. We have a variety of studies and different things that we do as operation of our enterprise accounts and enterprise accounts are funds that stand separately from the city. Within our water system, we have, we do a rate study periodically to set the rates that we charge residents to cover the cost it takes to provide the service. Our last rate study was adopted in April of 2010. We also do a master plan. That master plan is compiled to outline capital needs and to our system. Our last water master plan was adopted by the city council in July of 2012 and it highlighted around twenty-five million dollars in needed improvements within that report to our water system. Our sewer system last had our rates adopted in November of 2005 and we just, we had our last sewer master plan adopted in August of 2005 that identified fifteen million dollars in improvements. Now, we do have within our capital budget for this fiscal year an update to our sewer master plan, so that's going to be happening simultaneously with the preparation of this rate study. As the rate study went out, the city prepared and advertised our request for proposals. We received four proposals from qualified firms. A panel of city employees from multiple departments reviewed those proposals and deemed NBS to be the most qualified firm to submit a proposal. Can you go for one more, Patrick? Okay, well, I'll just talk about the rest of it. So there's only one slide more anyway. I'm going to quickly describe the process that we're going to go through and these are ultimately just talking through the tasks that are within the scope of service that you have attached to the agreement in front of you tonight. Our consultant, we're going to meet with our consultant and develop an outreach strategy to go to the community. The outreach through this process has requirements as outlined in Proposition 218 and so we're going to develop the strategy that both complies with requirements of Proposition 218, but also best solicits input from our community and educates them in regards to, through this process. Just within the scope of service, we right now have four council presentations. We have two public workshops, two outreach public workshops scheduled and set through this process. And we have informal mailers that are set to go out and educate and inform residents through the process. One item that I'm excited to include in this process that we have not done before is development of reserve policy. That's one of the scope of service. We have not had a reserve policy for our enterprise funds and so we do have fund balance, but we do not have reserve accounts or reserve balances. So one of the items within this process is to openly discuss and determine what reserve accounts should be there and what proper funding should be and allocate them for the future going forward. Finally, our consultant is going to finish with the cost of service analysis and then set our rates and we're going to go through the public process to set that. So with that, that concludes the presentation. I'm available to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions?
Yeah, I pulled the items. So I have, first of all, just on the topic, as we discussed earlier, Sean, I look forward to seeing a rate structure that has a motivation to conserve water, which we didn't have last time, so I'm looking forward to that. With regard to this item, on January 12th, we were presented with the proposed labor allocation percentage for the water and sewer fund. And that in part was because I asked for an agenda item in part in July 14th to address this item. And that came back to the council on Jan- January 12th of this year for, and it was completed in August, but that's another issue. But I received it on Friday night, January 9th, which means I had the weekend to get ready for Monday. And because of the lack of review time, I thought it was important that the council give it further consideration and continue the item, but council chose not to continue the item. And one of the problems is, Mayor Deaton, is that you indicated that it was a receive and file document, but in, within the document, it says, the staff report said, "Once the city council receives the report, staff will implement the recommended changes for the positions that require changes." So there was an action item, it wasn't just a receive and file. And so what I'd like to see before we proceed with this study is that we have an agenda item, we, and I think also you said we'd address it during the budget time, but now we are setting rates and we're not in the budget time.
We will be.
Yeah, but later, I think. The problem, the problem is, I think that we need to look at those labor allocations before we do a study because the study's going to set the rates. And if the labor allocations are part of the rates, we need to have an agreement on the labor allocation. So I would recommend that we continue the item on the study until such time as we actually have a meeting and resolve the labor allocations for the water and sewer funds.
So are you saying you disagree with the labor allocations?
I haven't, I hadn't had an opportunity to review them. Once the council wouldn't continue the item, I have other things to do, so I didn't continue it because it would do me no good to discuss it by myself, with myself. So, and as you said, you thought it was a read...
Well, I was told by the attorney it was a receive and file, so just a moment, please. Sean?
So if I might, I think that we can do both tasks simultaneously. This, the setting of the rates, the first detail I'd add is that the rate structures that we have adopted have a time period that they're valid for and went to the end of the time period for our current rates. So our rates do need to be updated and I think that we'll begin this process and we can go through it and any adjustments that we make to staff costs or allocations can be built into the new rate structure and the rates will reflect that, no matter what the changes are. So I think this process is long enough that we can come back and accommodate any requests.
Okay, and how does all this fit with the budget too?
Well, the budget will, we will build into the budget document our costs related to our expenses staffing and all the other expenses that we have, electricity and commodity costs and all those sorts of things.
So you think that can all be done at the same time?
Absolutely, it can be placed into, we have adequate time to put that into the budget and into the study and moving forward.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Mayor, if I could, I believe our finance director, Vicky Beetley, has some comments to add. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. And I do, Sean is correct, things can be built into the budget. And one of the things that though I'd like to have the council keep in mind is that any rate changes will be a Proposition 218, public hearing for the rates. So we might, Sean would typically and his group would prepare the budget cycle that we're in right now, but any rate adjustments would not be, would not be timely to be built into the budget. So it would be a separate action that would be taken by the council because you have to have 218 notices out forty-five days prior to the actual hearing and we're already within that timeframe where we're putting the budget together. So the fifteen, sixteen budget as it stands right now will be what we know at this time with the current rate, with the current expenses. And then anything that's related to the water and sewer rate studies would come back to the council, separate action, Prop 218 hearing and a vote that's associated with that.
So that means we're going to be putting together a budget, not knowing what the water and sewer are really going to cost us?
That's correct, but we are, we are currently in this current, in this current fiscal year, the water rate did not change because the last rate increase was in 2014. So right now, we're charging the same rate that we charged last year and we're actually okay to go ahead and do that and especially because this one has a reserve study in it and I think that's very important for us to get through as well before we make any, any rate implications because having a reserve set a specific level, excuse me, level will obviously impact the rates that we also adopt. So Sean's correct, we can move forward at this time. Councilmember Miller's concerns about the allocations, none of the significant, except the things that needed to be corrected from the agreed-upon procedures, nothing else was implemented differently because we knew the water and sewer rate study was going to be coming and there's some other components also that we need to work on. But it's, I think it's critical for us to move forward so that we can make timely decisions about any rate changes coming up later on in the year.
So were the personnel then reallocated after that study or are you waiting for budget?
No, we're waiting for budget and we're waiting to see where this, so this study will be done concurrently with the budget and any changes that will be coming up would be incorporated into the study, not into the budget.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, I think though that, I can be corrected if I'm wrong, of course, but I'm thinking that before you have this outreach to the public, you want to tell them the rates when you meet with them because that's what they're interested in. How much am I going to pay?
Right.
That's what they want to know. So we have to have the budget, we have to have that, agree on the allocation, if they're correct or not correct, we need to do all that before the outreach comes.
And that's part, that would be part of the public hearings, Councilmember Miller. So we would, the consultant would work on the water and sewer rate studies in conjunction with staff, we'd put all the information together, we would have workshops. Typically, what happens is we would have workshop, perhaps more than one with the council to talk about all those details that need to be worked out before we come back with a rate recommendation and move forward with the 218 process.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Do I have a motion?
I just think it's important that we look at those and they may be all right, but I think it's important that we look at them because as you said, you thought it was receive and file and we put it off till budget time. I just want the rates set before we have a discussion of that allocation.
All right, so I think what the point is there, we should grab those out and get a good look at them before that time.
I would appreciate that.
Okay, do you, do I have a motion?
What is, what is the motion?
The motion is to approve the professional services agreement for the 2015 water and sewer rate. Study. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Please vote. That's five zero to adopt Resolution Number 6537, approving a professional services agreement. All right, now we're going to move on to new business. So Vicky, it looks like you're going to be on again. Fiscal year 2015 mid-year budget review, receive and file. So do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mayor, you're correct. Our Director of Finance and City Treasurer, Vicky Beetley, will present this item to you tonight. Vicky?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Mayor, members of the council, it looks like we are having technical difficulties. So Patrick will work on restarting the presentation. Does the council have copies of the presentation? No? Okay, so we'll just have to wait. Hey, I know, maybe can we take a quick break?
Oh, there's a good idea, but could I make a request that we do have copies from now on? I really like to have them on the dais. Thank you. Okay, let's take a five-minute recess, please. Hillary is now back in session and we are going to do our mid-year budget review with our finance director, Vicky Beetley.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'll go through a presentation of where we currently stand in the 1415 budget cycle. And anytime during the presentation, if you have any questions, please go ahead and ask, otherwise there's time at the end if you want to save your questions till the end. So where we are right now, the budget adopted at the beginning of the fiscal year was for revenue, twenty-eight point seven million. We've had one approved budget modification for nine thousand dollars. So the current total budget is twenty-eight point seven million, which is pretty much where we started. The one budget modification in revenue was for community services. They received a grant from Run Seal Beach and the modification for accepting the revenue and modifying the expense budget came to the council. From a sources of revenue perspective, the top five sources of revenue listed here, property tax, utility users' tax, sales tax, property tax in lieu of vehicle license fees and transient occupancy tax, otherwise known as hotel bed tax or TOT. These are the same five sources of revenue that are the top five in each budget cycle. Sometimes they switch places, but generally speaking, property tax is the number one source of revenue. And together, these top five sources of revenue generate about seventy percent of the total revenue in the general fund or approximately twenty-six, twenty-point-six million dollars in revenue. Property tax, that's one thing that I can say without a doubt in Seal Beach is just doing extremely well. Over the last, since the last time we did this presentation, the taxable value of property in the city has increased about six-point-seven percent, whereas the county only increased by six-point-three percent. And I'm using the word only, in my opinion, six-point-three or six anything is actually very good. Typically, in the past, real estate increases are expected to average about three percent per year, so we're still growing quite well in this area. The assessed valuation in the city increased by three-hundred-and-seven million dollars, primarily to the Prop eight value recapture and those are homes that were Prop thirteen that have specific values and through the proposition can only increase a certain percentage every year. The median home price in Seal Beach is at seven-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars as of September of last year, a seventy-six thousand dollar increase, over ten percent. And this is the second year where we've had a ten percent increase in the median property value. And for general information for the council, just as a reminder, that properties in Seal Beach have a basic levy of one percent of the most recent assessed value. Your property tax bills are higher than that because there's special assessments that are on the property tax bill for school districts and those kinds of things. And the city of Seal Beach gets about fifteen cents of every dollar of the one percent. So the city doesn't get all of it as some people think, we get fifteen cents on the dollar for those assessed value of the, for that assessed value of the basic levy. And Seal Beach uses a great source for a couple of things. HDL Corn and Cone is well-known in the industry. They provide all of this property tax information and the details that I've given in this presentation are from the most recent information that we received from HDL. The top ten property taxpayers, speaking of leisure world, is on this list, but we have, as you can see here, I won't read all the names. The one change this year, these names are typically the same year over year, the one change this year is that Helman Properties LLCs replace Seal Beach Shores on this top ten list and these are in alphabetical order. A lot of this information is confidential, so everything you see here is not listed in anything except alphabetical order so that that information can remain confidential. The property tax budget, six-point-seven million. So far this year, we received three-point-six million. The good news is the receipts are ahead of the same time last year by about a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. Some of the reason for that improvement is actually homes have started selling more. In fact, the property tax transfer that we just got from the county, we share in the proceeds from that revenue that's collected when sales occur in the city was for fifteen homes, actually closed escrow in the month of December in the city of Seal Beach. Given the information that we have currently, it's my expectation that this revenue stream will finish better than the budget expectation for the year. Utility users' tax is another large source of revenue and the budget here is five-point-three million. So far, we're at about two million dollars. Typically, when you look at not only property tax, but utility users' tax and you'll see in a minute, sales tax, the revenue versus, received versus what's budgeted looks sort of low, but for information purposes, the fiscal year for the city ends on June 30th, but there's two months' worth of payments that come in July and August, which is kind of a large percentage of these payments that are accrued back to the current fiscal year. So given where we are at this point in time, the receipts in... So given where we are at this point in time, the receipts in this area are about 90,000 better than they were at this time last year. However, this is one area where we will not do as well as we expected because the voters approved the reduction in the utility users' tax, which is now coming into play with all of the remitters. So we expect, or I expect, that this revenue will definitely be below expectations for the year because the measure approved a reduction in all three, electric, gas, and telecommunications. And so I expect that this will be probably about $3,000, excuse me, $300,000 below budget by the time we finish the year. I will tell you, however, to that end, that we are starting to get remittance information and revenue from people that have not paid in the two years that I've worked here. So Uni Services was the, is the consultant that we hired to help us audit our utility users' tax. And when the measure passed, they sent out, or created letters, we sent them out to several hundred potential remitters. Some of them don't remit, but we just send it out to everybody that's on the list, rather than just trying to find out which ones do business in the city of Seal Beach. And so we're starting to see some of the revenues trickle in. Perhaps these businesses have actually been providing the service in the city for a number of years but have never remitted. So we're starting to pick up some of that revenue, which is a good thing as part of the audit. Sales tax. Actually, this is another good news story. Our sales tax composition, fuel and service stations make up about 24% of the revenue. General consumer goods make up about 31% of the revenue. Restaurants and hotels, about 19%. And there's a variety of different types of business in the all-other category that make up the last 26%. The top 10 accounts, that means the top 10 remitters of sales tax that benefit the city generate about 40% of the sales tax revenue. That, at this time last year, those top 10 accounts actually generated about 45% of the revenue. So we have more diversity now in the sales tax providers in the city, and that's actually good for us, because that means we're not relying on as many sales tax remitters as we did last year at this time. There are 792 registered businesses in the city of Seal Beach. The top 25 of those businesses generate 61% of the sales tax revenue to the city. So we're still fairly reliant on a very small number of businesses in the city of Seal Beach, but we're getting better about, about the diversification. And earlier this year, again, a good news story, the Register, Terri Sforza, did an article, it was in either February 7th or Sunday's February 9th paper, about recovery of sales tax in Orange County. And the headline, I won't read all the information, this article was shared with the council, retail sales tax back to pre-recession levels in many Orange County cities, but not all. And the city of Seal Beach was specifically highlighted for their performance, and over the, from the 2003 period to the 2014 period, the sales tax revenue in the city of Seal Beach increased 102%, which was the number one increase in all of the cities in the county. So we are, as highlighted by this article, we are doing quite well in the sales tax area, especially given to many of the other cities that are much larger than us. For us to be able to say that we're the top-performing sales tax city in the last 10 years or so, I think is a big achievement. Again, alphabetical list, these are the top 10 sales taxpayers in the city of Seal Beach. You recognize some of them from the shops at Rossmore or the Target Center. On this list, Home Goods, GNM Oil, and Seal Beach Mobile are new additions to the list this year, and the other members of this list are typically on the same, excuse me, on this list every year. As far as budget goes, we have 4.4 million budgeted. We're currently at just over $1 million. Again, this is one of those numbers that looks kind of small compared to what we're ultimately expecting to receive by the end of the year. However, receipts are slightly ahead of where we would typically be at this time of the year. The increase from last year is about $125,000, which is about 14%. And given what we just heard in the Register article, there's a lot of good news. The article also talks about the sales over at the Target Center and Rossmore. I think that those are also critical, and I think one of the reasons why our sales tax is higher than it was at this same period of time, we're talking about the period ended December, so December 14 versus December 13, I believe it's because the bridge construction was done and access to the shopping centers on the other side of the freeway was much better than it was in December of 2013. My opinion is that we'll end the year in line or slightly ahead of the expectations for sales tax. One other thing I'd like to mention is, over the past couple of years, we've made some adjustments to the sales tax revenue budget that have actually decreased the budget, mostly because of sales in the fuel and service stations industry, or fuel and petroleum industry. I'm happy to report that for the first time this last quarter, those declines have leveled off and actually have started to improve slightly. So we might, you know, see some improvement in the budget going forward, but it's very good news that those pretty significant declines over the last two years have leveled off. Vehicle license fee, this is one of those things that's very definitely kind of an odd revenue stream. There's some things that have gone on in the state that made this a separate vehicle, the vehicle license, a separate source of revenue. It used to just be part of, a regular source of revenue, but it's something called the triple flip and got all these things mixed up a little bit. But the bottom line here is, we've received zero. We've received zero, and that's slightly behind where we were last year. We got about 28,000 this time last year. But this is a level pay, it comes in twice a year, and by the end of the fiscal year, we will receive pretty much right on budget because these numbers are fairly accurate, given to us from the consultant. So I have no concerns about that fact that we have zero now, and we're expecting 2.2 million by the end of the year. Transient occupancy tax, again, a good source of revenue in the city. Budget's about 1.2 million. We've received about 400,000. That is actually about 13% lower than last year, about $62,000 less. One of the hotel, small hotel operators in the city has an active license, but have not been operating as one of the vacation rentals this year for whatever reason. And so this is actually a reduction from that one remitter not operating as a hotel. So given that, my expectation for the end of the year is that we'll be slightly below budget in this area. Business license, another area where we focused on over the last couple of years. The budget was about 560,000. So far, we've received just over 400. The receipts are slightly behind last year, and one of the things that happens in business license is, we have a standard business license for, for most businesses, it's $215. Some of the businesses, however, are manufacturing businesses, and those, that business license is based upon gross receipts. So if they don't sell as much, or they don't make as much as they did the prior year, then the business license revenue would be impacted by their manufacturing actions, and that's actually what we're seeing this year. So I am expecting this to also be slightly lower. I would say probably around $60,000 lower than we had this time last, excuse me, at the end of the year. So overall, from a general fund perspective, we are at 27, excuse me, 28.7 million budget. We've received just over $11 million. Our general fund revenue is at about, is about 38%. It's about typical for December versus December, so it's not bad. But our overall versus last year is about half a percent, or about $56,000 on the revenue Moving on to the expenses, the total adopted expense budget is about $32 million. We've had approved expense modifications, a little bit more detail to follow, so the total current expense budget is 32.2 million. We've had some general fund budget modifications. The most significant was the street sweeping that just came to the council recently. There's the expense side of the Run Seal Beach. And then we have various purchase order encumbrances that occur when we roll over expenditures from the prior year to the current year of about $290,000. So the expense budget is 32.2 million. Where are we right now? There's a lot of detail, and the council was given some information in part of the packet, some of the detail, but the detail is actually a lot greater than you've gotten. The, the report was condensed. We're at about 16% of our annual budget for expenses, right at the 50% level. It is actually what I would expect for December because it's six months. However, we have spent more than we did at this time last year. Not a concern, it's just a matter of timing and of the budgets, the way they're being spent. The non-general fund revenues are in line with expectations, as are expenses. I think overall, right now, the total revenues are about, estimated overall funds are about 8.5% higher, and expenses are actually pretty much right in line with budget. And because we're only through six months, this is actually a best guess. We don't budget periodically in the city, we budget on a whole-year basis. So I'm just saying, you know, given what we know, given what's going on, talking with the department heads, we're pretty much expecting for the entire budget to be relatively within expectations typically. Our revenues are a little higher, and our expenses are a little lower, but we'll see as we get closer to the end of the year. Pension, just give you a little bit of update, we started talking about this last year. Miscellaneous employees are in the 2 at 55 pool. The employer contribution for this year was 12.33 plus 1% of the employee share. So the city, the, excuse me, the employees in this group are now paying 6% with the city picking up 1%. With the next budget, the employees will be picking up 100% of their share. As of June 30th, 2012, the funded ratio on the miscellaneous employees was 77.5%. Seal Beach pays 100% of the required contribution each year, and again, there were some minor actuarial changes this year, but nothing that has made a significant change like those that we've already discussed in the last year. The safety employees are in the 3 at 50 pool. The employer contribution for them was 29.556 plus zero. The employees in this bargaining, in these bargaining units are not only paying 100% of their employee contribution, which is 9%, but you can see their employee contribution is 12%. So that means this group is actually picking up 3% of the city's share of the cost for managing this program in the 3 at 50 pool. New employees to Seal Beach, and I've added a note on this slide, a new employee now, just for clarification, means an employee that was not in CalPERS prior to joining work at the city of Seal Beach. So the new miscellaneous employees by statute from the state of California are now 2 at 62. The safety employees are 2.7 at 57, and again, Seal Beach pays 100% of the required contribution for all of the plans. All of these plans for Seal Beacher employees were in a pool, were part of whatever the 2 at 62 pool, or the 2 at 50, or excuse me, the 3 at 50 pool. One of the changes that is, CalPERS is looking to make this year or coming up is that by virtue of creating the new pools through legislation, they have effectively created obsolescent pools, being the 3 at 50 pool or the 2 at 60 pool. There's not going to be any more new members in those pools because new CalPERS members have to go into these pools as prescribed here. So essentially, what is going to happen is eventually the retirees are going to be greater than employees, so it's going to have an impact on the cost. So PERS is looking at creating one miscellaneous pool, one safety pool. So every member, regardless of whether or not you're a Pepper member or a Classic member, all miscellaneous members will be in the same miscellaneous pool. All safety members will be in the same safety pool. And by doing that, they have eliminated that obsolescence of the other pool, and we're all supporting each other. So it's a really good change for CalPERS to be looking at, and I don't anticipate that that change won't occur. The CalPERS board is actually working on the final changes to make that transition for them. Pension obligation bonds, again, just a quick summary. They were issued in 2008. They were for fire and safety. They saved the city about half a million dollars. In the last fiscal year, the fire component of that pension obligation bond was paid off, so just the safety component is left with the final payment being four short years away. OPAB, this is our other post-employment benefits. This is otherwise known as retiree health. Over the years, the city has made changes to the benefits for new employees retiring from the city. And this is something that the city has created, has joined a trust for at CalPERS, and one of the changes that has come up for us over the last year is the actuarial required contribution with the new valuation was actually reduced from a requirement that the city was paying before. So this year, our required contribution was 329,000. We had budgeted a contribution of 518,000. So the city is choosing to continue to pay at the old rate, and what this does is a number of things. Number one, it helps us reduce that unfunded obligation by paying a little bit extra each year. And the real benefit, if, if one were to think about it in simple terms, if I had $500,000 and I could invest it, I'd only get just over 1%. But if I have that same $500,000 and I send it to PERS, I get their actuarial rate, which is about 7.25% or so. It makes complete sense that we'll be sending money that we might have set aside that's unrestricted to go ahead and send it up there because we're getting a better value for our money. The challenge that we have with this, and something that we need to keep in mind, is that we don't want to fund the program so much that at some point in time, we become overfunded because it's a trust and it's set aside. Any contributions that we send cannot come back to the city. So we can judiciously start paying this down by sending, you know, 500,000 here and 500,000 there, and we're not anywhere close to being 100% funded. I'd be very comfortable with continuing on this program if we were about 80% funded, and, and we're currently only about 30% funded. Again, we're making 100% of the annual required contribution to the program. But if we can chip away at that, by sending that extra money aside, I think it'd be of great value to the city. Last slide. This is a pretty amazing story. You've heard some really great details about some of the revenues that are coming into the city. The executive team and all of the employees at the city are very conscientious about the money they spend, about the work that they do. And this council and previous councils have put the city in very, very good shape. We're fiscally sound, we're financially responsible, we have well-funded reserves that are set aside for various purposes, and very excited about the water and sewer rate study and the requirements that are going to be coming up for that. But in the meantime, I just think it's a great story to tell, and I think that, I'd like to thank you, council, and I think we all should be very proud of the financial report for the city. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have questions?
Vicky, a couple of things. First of all, as the mayor indicated, I would like to get a, if you could email me a copy of the presentation, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
Page one of the six you provided in the staff report.
Mm-hmm.
I had indicated that the, I thought that the 2014, 2015 budget numbers weren't exactly like they were in the budget. Did you revise those, or can you revise those and provide me with those? I, I'm only reason I'm kind of interested, how they compare to the other year.
The, if you, let me go back here real quick. There we go. So this slide, the adopted budget was 28.78 million, and there was one revenue modification for $9,000. So that's the 28,727, which is what the, the difference between what was adopted and what the budget currently is.
If you added up that column, though, it didn't come to 28,000, it came to 27 million instead of 28 million, 27-some million.
If you continue on through the presentation, so if you look down in that first column that you're looking at, the 1415 budget, if you go down and you that you're looking at, the 14-15 budget, if you go down, and you can see about halfway down on the first page, or a little below, total senior bus program revenue, 91,200. So any, any of the revenues that are below that total general fund revenue line are included in that number.
Okay, that explains it. Let me ask you, because you gave me the numbers, I have a couple of questions. I looked at the council, and the council's already spent like $83,000. Does that mean some of the council have already used their discretionary funds?
Yes.
Uh-huh. Have I? I don't think I have, that's why I'm asking. Except Sean keeps telling me I'll pay for a tree or part of a tree.
We're working on it for you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that's really why it's up at that level?
Yes.
Those, those people that left this council used their discretionary before they left, huh? You have no discretionary?
I do.
Oh, do you? Okay, I'm just joking. Okay, the other one I wanted to ask you about was the election. I assume that the reason it's only 500 is because we haven't received the bill from the county. Right. The one that really I was curious about was the total risk management. We're already exceeding the budget, we're only halfway through the year.
Well, part of that is because with CalJPIA, we get our bill in January, excuse me, July. Let me get with you, just a minute. Which page are you on?
I'm on page one of six, and I'm on the fourth item from the bottom, it says total
Oh, okay, so last meeting, the auditor came and did the presentation for last year. And one of the items that she talked about was that accrual for the retrospective premium adjustment. When we made the payment, we took the entire negative amount, and they actually made us restate that amount in the, in the books, and that's why it changed this number. But we're not over budget from...
It shows 749,000 versus 917,000.
You know what? I will have to look at that and make certain, but I'm fairly sure it has to do with the accounting entry, more than the actual budget.
And there'll be no more funds for this year, that's, that's it?
Only minor, yeah, only minor. But I will answer that question.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's all my questions, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, then, I will direct it to be received and filed. And that's it for this evening. So I now adjourn the city council meeting to Monday, March 9th. Before you all get up, Monday, March 9th, when, I would also like to say that we should be reviewing the Coyote management plan at that meeting, so I wanted to announce that. Thank you.